Good evening and welcome to the December 11th, 2023 Board of Education Work Session: Legislative Priorities. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve that the agenda of Monday, December 11th, 2023 Work Session Legislative Priorities be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 President Garlock.
Aye. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session where we will discuss legislative priorities for the 2024 legislative year. I'd like to extend my gratitude to our esteemed board members and to our state legislators who joined us today. This year, we've adopted a revised strategic plan, a blueprint for every learner future-ready, which focuses on mobilizing our community toward achieving our core goals. Today's work session is a crucial step towards mobilizing our community around our priorities as a board for public education. As we strive to stabilize our district by building trust and credibility, we're committed to doing so transparently and inclusively. Public education is of the utmost importance to us, and we're eager to engage in an open discussion as we advocate for the betterment of public schools and the needs of Iowa students. Before we get started, I'd like to just do a quick round of introductions so that everyone knows who everyone is. Vice President Tominski, would you start, please?
Hi, welcome. So David Tominski, representing District One, been on the board since 2019, so just recently got elected for a second term here in November.
Jennifer Borcherting, District Three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're three.
District Three. I've been on the board for six years. You'd think I would know what district I'm in for six years.
Senator Molly Donahue, District 37, and also employee, so thank you.
State Representative Tracy Eller, House District 79, I'm also an employee.
Todd Taylor, State Senator, District 40.
Good afternoon. Jeff Coiling, State Representative, District 77.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caitlin Byers. I'm District Four, and I'm the newest board member, so excited to be here and meet all of you.
Hello. It's nice to see you all again. Jen Newman, Director-at-Large, elected in 2019 and just re-elected a couple weeks ago.
I'm Nancy Humbos, District Two, and I've been on the board for 14 years.
Hello. Thank you so much for being here. Dr. Grover, the new superintendent.
She says with a smile. I'm Sidney Garlock, Director-at-Large, just starting my second term and recently elected president of this esteemed group, so thank you all for being here. In your handouts, you'll find the legislative priorities as set forth by the Urban Education Network, which is the large schools in the state, and the Iowa Association of School Boards. Tonight, I'm proposing that we discuss the eight priorities from IASB while providing context from our school district's perspective. We do want to ground ourselves in our vision of every learner future-ready and our mission. Please take a moment to find in your packet, moment to read our mission statement. In your handouts, you'll also find a few fast The IASB priorities that we're going to be talking about start on page 13, I believe, of your packet. Yeah, okay, where the purple tab is. And we will be going through those eight priorities in order. We're not going to read them to you, but we will, we will give you a brief overview. So President, Vice President, see, I can't get it right. Vice President Tominski, would you get us started, please?
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, lots to read. The entire board was able to participate in the Iowa Association of School Boards Annual Conference this past year, which was only a few weeks ago. So it was exciting to just have lots of opportunity to talk about different aspects of school boards, but certainly a big part of that is legislative advocacy, which I think you all know has been really important for this school board. So the opportunity to share eight of those priorities with you. Some of these, you might notice, you know, show up from year to year. So early literacy and learning certainly is something that's been important for a very long time. So we believe that literacy is the building block of student achievement and student success. A lot more detail in the handout that President Garlock just pointed to you, but wanted to maybe share some local information, so specifically around preschool. Our count at the Cedar Rapids Community School District in October was 469. We're currently being funded at .5, full-time equivalent, FTE, for 240 of those students. We currently use $1.1 million of ESAR funds for all-day programming. As our ESAR money goes away, we begin to have a deficit unless we are adequately funding for all-day preschool. So ELL, or English Language Learners, another big part of this, this area. Our ELL count, so it has gone up. So if you go back to October 2020, our number was 837. In '21, same October, 888. It grew to 989 in 2022, and it's currently sitting at 1156. So the district receives .26 weighted count for students at Level 1 proficiency and .21 weighted count for students at Level 2 proficiency. Now, the district had a $1.8 million deficit in ELL funding for fiscal year '23. So increased weighting is needed to adequately fund for ELL. And the last point that I'll make here on this one is just investing in quality early childhood development for disadvantaged children is most effective, is the most effective way to reduce deficits, according to Professor Heckman. It not only leads to better education, health, social, and economic outcomes, but also increases revenue while reducing the need for costly social spending. So the Heckman curve clearly demonstrates that the highest rate of economic return comes from early investment in children. It's imperative to invest early and build skill upon skill, enabling greater success for more children and greater productivity while reducing social spending for our society. And we could certainly talk more about that, but we've got seven more, so.
If we want to, if you guys have any questions or comments, please feel free to jump in here at any time. We're going to be giving you a lot of information, so if you need us to stop, just, just give us the signal.
Director Humbos, I believe you've got a priority, too?
Yes. The second, the second priority is diverse and competent workforce. And as we all know, there is a shortage in staff and a lack of personnel that really impacts the quality of education in elementary and our core subjects, special education for all, fifth through 12th grade science, and as well as math, language arts, and social studies. Cedar Rapids filled 148 teaching positions this year. They had to make changes to the learning model to make sure, make, to make, okay, model, to make do with the positions that we had to fill. The largest issue when talking with qualified candidates was, was the wage gap versus other industries. And this is true in our nearly 50 para postings today and 70 other pairs they were hired this school year. One of the things that we should be thinking about or considering, too, is how do we, how do we maintain and retain our teachers and also our pairs in the Cedar Rapids School District? And thinking of licensure, flexibility, alternative internships, funding our Grow Your Own programs, and loan forgiveness initiative. So that, that's what we have heard, and that is one of the legislative priorities, priorities that we do have. And it's really important that we reach to our kids earlier when it comes to teaching. We have let them know the value of their gift that they give to students by teaching and not waiting until they're in 12th grade and say, hey, you want to be a teacher? Let's get in early and let them know that they, too, can become a teacher and impact our district and our community. So that is one of the priorities. And I pass it on to...
Jen Newman.
Jen, Director Newman.
All right. Well, as you probably know, public schools that have the authority and capacity, and capacity to innovate are really crucial to success for our...
Excuse me. Justin Stink, please use the microphone.
I'm the worst.
Thanks for catching that.
So, so public school districts that have authority and capacity to innovate are crucial for the success of our students and our families. And I've often said, I think we have geniuses who work in our district and in our community partnerships. We have the ability to figure these things out if we are given the capacity to do so. Our support lies with state policies that invest in magnet and innovation schools, expand flexible program policies, and allow for greater partnerships among schools and community organizations. These policies are essential for the betterment of the education system and the future of our society. We have six magnet schools here, innovative programming through Metro, Hoover Community School, and Blend Ed. We also have numerous community partnerships that help us do this work and allow for us to program for academic and mental health services as well. We are looking to expand our college and career readiness program offerings and would greatly benefit from innovation and college and career readiness funds. We are 44 points below the state average for post-secondary readiness for career and technical education and eight points below the state average in the composite post-secondary readiness score. We need support in order to get there and to meet our goals.
Do you have any legislators, do you have any questions at this point? How's, how's your brain?
So far, so good.
So far, so good. Okay. Jennifer, Director Borcherting.
Oh. Kind of building on what Director Newman had said, we do rely a lot on community partners for mental health, and we do have mental health practices also that we're, we're maintaining inside our district. We believe that student educator and staff mental health needs to be addressed and supported to improve student achievement, reduce dropout rates, and maintain a high-quality workforce. So I think mental health is something that, that is not a new topic, and it's been talked about from schools kind of across the state, so hoping that we can actually get some, some traction there. So we support funding and weighted funding for mental health professionals within the school system. Currently, we have 47 school counselors, and CRCSD currently has four behavioral health interventionists and 20 mental health therapists through Tannager, who is a community partner. Tannager sees 592 students. That was at the end of November. They had seen 592 students. We do have 12 community partners that, that we fund to help support mental health and academic achievement. Local school boards must retain the responsibility to determine at-risk and dropout prevention programs and funds, as they are accountable for the staff and schools. At any attempt to strip away this local control would have a catastrophic impact on the services we provide. Poverty is a statewide challenge, but it is concentrated in the UEN districts, which educate 52% of low-income students despite enrolling only 42% of Iowa's public school students. Therefore, we demand the inclusion of a poverty factor in our formula to provide additional funding for students from low-income families. It is crucial to note that CRCSD's poverty level is already at 55% and continues to grow. Since 2020, we have had 279 EAP cases and 251 individuals utilize the work-life portal. The work-life total can be included in, can include individuals who are also in the EAP case category.
Thank you, Director Borcherting. We are on priority number five, which has to do with local control. And Director Roundtree, I believe that one is yours.
Do you want some more? Okay, Iowa school boards are elected by, okay. Let me do that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So local control and home rule. Okay, that's me. So we firmly believe in the principle of home rule, enshrined in Iowa Code 274.3, which emphasizes local control. When creating and interpreting Iowa Code and administrative rules, it is our view that in recent years there has been a trend towards codes and policies that are more centralized and follow one-size-for-all approach. You agree with that?
[laughing]
Okay. However, we strongly advocate that matters, we strongly advocate that matters such as reading material for literacy courses in libraries, student identification, open enrollment, and educational savings accounts should be left to the discretion of the local school boards to create policies and govern their districts.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director Roundtree, for that. Director Byers, I believe you are up next, talking about transparency around taxpayer dollars. Sounds like ESA.
Yeah. I was gonna say, speaking of ESAs, also known as vouchers, for others who may not know that acronym. It is the number six, the priority states that we believe that schools must be open and welcoming to all students and fully accountable and transparent in order to receive taxpayer dollars. On that note, we understand that ESAs are probably here to stay for the time being, but some stats for you. Our school districts, Cedar Rapids Community School District, lost 843 students to the ESA, and although many of those students were already in the private system, you know, to say that this is more equitable is absolutely untrue. When you're talking, when you're taking funding from private schools, as you know, and diverting that money to fund ESAs, and then allowing non-public institutions to handpick the students that they're, you know, able to serve, turning others away, this isn't the opposite of an even playing field. So we really believe that accredited private schools who accept ESA funds should be held at the same standard as public schools with respect to accountability and transparency. One consideration is if a student withdraws from a private school after October 1st enrollment count date and enrolls in a public school, the student should be counted for funding or spending authority in the coming fiscal year. So, you know, offering this sort of a deadline would improve the ability for schools to budget and stat, you know, for staff and allocate those funds accordingly for the students that they're serving. So additionally, we oppose any plans and programs that redirect additional taxpayer dollars toward private schools, homeschool, or private services. Charter schools, as we know, are coming to Cedar Rapids, and as you can probably guess, we are not thrilled, and we are quite concerned about this. We have three applications for charter schools within our district boundaries, and this will, again, divert more monies away from the general fund to, that will have an impact, you know, on things like staff salaries. So another major concern that I believe we all could get behind. And finally, the district processed $453,698 of public, non-public transportation for student reimbursements in fiscal year 2023. The check count was 690, and this costs, you know, the district in human capital to receive the data from the non-public schools, tracking it, evaluating it, and processing those payments. So that's an expense to our district. And, you know, as you know, we, and it's been stated here time and again, we aim to offer high-quality public education here in the Cedar Rapids Community School District to all students, and we really hold, hold our public schools to a high standard. So we need that sufficient funding to match so we can provide quality education for all students. So we're not in favor of money being taken away from public school districts while unfairly benefiting non-public schools that are subject to different rules. This hurts public schools, and our public schools and our students deserve much better. Thank you.
Exie, could you say that number again, 453.6?
Yep, 450, 453,698 of non-public transportation for parent reimbursements.
Oh, sure, sure. Thank you.
You bet.
So, yeah, I think that's money that flows through, and we have to be responsible for making sure all that money gets where it's going, which is human capital that we're, we're expending and really not getting any benefit from that. I have priority number seven, everyone's favorite topic in the state legislature, and that is supplemental state aid. So I've found this in my materials. I think it's a graph that you guys are well familiar with. It shows the historical data of SSA in the state, and I, I don't know if you can all see it, but that solid line is definitely heading in a direction that we're not real pleased about. It's going down. We're not keeping up with inflation.
I'll take a picture of that.
Oh, sorry, Ted.
That's okay. I'll zoom in. Yeah, I just want it on my phone.
Yeah. So even though last year we got 3% SSA, which that's like good in recent history, that clearly is not enough to keep up with inflationary costs. We, I think, have been fortunate in the last couple, two, three years that we've had ESAR monies to fill some of those holes and gaps. But as we know, that money is going to go away. So we are at a place where SSA is really critical. And I don't know if you can shed any light on what you're hearing about what might happen there. I know the governor and the GOP will come out with their recommendation, and the Democrats will do likewise. Hopefully, that number will be bigger than it has been recently. As you know, the money that we get through SSA funds our general fund, and 80% of our expenditures are to pay our staff. And you've heard from previous priorities here that staff retention, attracting staff to Iowa and to our school district is also at a critical place. So without competitive salaries, that is going to continue to be a problem. So SSA affects everything from staff to preschool to the programs that we can offer. So I know that you understand how important that is. We just want to reinforce that. In addition to just like raising that SSA percent a little bit higher, the other thing that we would like to advocate for is getting some weighting for kids who are living in poverty. As an urban school district, we have a lot of kids with a lot of needs, and that might be slightly different than some of our smaller rural schools. And so we need, we need some additional funds to help us with, with those students who need that extra attention. Same way for ELL. You've heard that here around the table. Likewise, for our special education kids, we, we're running deficits in those programs, and it's not sustainable. So we just, we need to address that in some fashion. One of the things that I find interesting when we survey our work groups, virtually every work group has indicated that their top three reasons for recruiting are retaining, sorry, for recruiting and retaining staff are the wages, the onboarding, and the professional learning. So all of those things obviously cost money, and without, you know, a significant increase in our SSA, those will continue to be challenges. So I don't know if you have any crystal balls on, on that topic?
I would just say we have the money. We've got it. And if, if it came to it, I would vote for 10%, and that would help alleviate the ongoing deficits. I don't think that's going to turn into law. I think we're probably going to see a 3%, and there's going to be a lot of talk around that. And that's just my prognostication from, from a distance, so.
Yeah.
I would love to see a 3%, but because inflation has gone down, I think we will see her offer less.
Less than three.
Yeah. And, and unfortunately, with, with income tax, is their goal to zero it outright? That's going to bring in less. She's giving away the bank to others. It's not school.
Yeah, that, that's a concern as we get a little further down the road, and the full impact of ESAs in conjunction with the income tax cuts, it, it's like we're headed for a train wreck.
Well, and it also affects your poverty line, because people who can't afford things are going to have to pay more.
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, that was, that was that one. The last priority that we want to talk about is safe and secure learning environment, and I, I get the privilege of addressing that one also. I think the big picture here is, again, we're an urban school. We have students who come to us with a lot of needs, behavioral needs, academic needs, social, emotional needs. And one of our priorities as a district is to make sure that we provide a safe environment for them. That's a complicated, a complicated issue. We, here in Cedar Rapids, have employed a safe and secure learning coordinator to help us with that. We have safety teams at every school. We are trying to support our teachers in the best way that we possibly can. But again, all of those things require funding. So I think my message to you and to the community is, these are our kids, and we really need to make sure that they are learning in a safe environment, and that doesn't seem to be like something that should be negotiable. We need to provide the resources in order to do that. So that is the eight priorities. Dr. Grover, do you have any additional comments?
No, let's open it up for questions so I can make sure we're able to hear from our guests.
I just have a, I think I just need a one or two-sentence understanding of weighted in terms of the additional funding. I think I get it just from the basic context, but in, in the, you needed some weighted funding, maybe...
For the kids living in poverty?
For the poverty, poverty, yes. I think I get it by context, but if somebody could just help me just...
Are you talking about, like, the at-risk kids? There's a little extra for the weighting on that, or for special education, there's a little extra weighting on the need?
Right. Yes, that already exists, but I, we're asking for additional weighting for kids living in poverty. Yeah, there is extra weighting for special ed ELL, none of which is sufficient, and that's why we're running a deficit in all of those programs. But we, we have a lot of kids living in poverty. We were just over at Hoover Community School today, and the statistics are really something. And the work that they're doing there is amazing, but the kids living in poverty, the ELL kids, like, it's, it's significant in this district.
For example, for our SSA, you get how much per student, per pupil? 7,000.
7,635.
7,635. So if we add an additional weighting, like, say, .3, you take that times .3, now you can get $8,000, I had to change my math, $8,000 for a kid that...
Thank you. I needed that.
Yeah, that's what supplemental weighted funding means.
And I, and I think that we call that some of the specific areas. First, we talk about the poverty piece, the ELL piece, and then I do want to just go back to the early childhood piece, because that is one of our top priorities. And right now, was, did I see Monica in here earlier, or was she here? Okay, from, I thought, I thought I saw her from our early childhood center. But again, for example, right now, we're being funded at .5 for early childhood education, and we do have a full-day program at Truman where we have about 50 kids or so that are on a way. on a waiting list, looking for a place where they can be educated. And for parents, the full-day program is important because they're trying to go to work. It is very hard for some of them to leave in the middle of the day for the half-day programs, and so for many students, they don't even have any opportunity to really be in a high-quality early childhood setting. And our, we were able to open Truman two years ago, thank you to the board and the leadership, by using the ESAR dollars. And so just hearing her talk about it today, just how tremendous the impact has been and what she's seeing with those students in this just a short amount of time, the difference between a half-day program and a full-day program, but yet, that's a discussion that we're going to have to have as an organization. Once this ESAR funding goes away, which it goes away this school year, then how do we continue to offer a full-day program? So one major ask from the state, and I do believe that you have a representative, y'all remember his name, maybe that is someone already taking that issue forward for the full-day pre-K. DT, I'm kind of looking at you.
Senator Rosenbaum said that's one of his.
It is.
Okay, very good.
There is a group, there is a, yeah, there is a group in Des Moines that's bipartisan because I've been contacted by Tom Chapman and had discussions. They are pushing very hard for the whole state to start with all four-year-olds in preschool, for funding for this year and this next year.
Wonderful, thank you. See, I'm learning. I'm trying to get up to speed really quickly here, and so if we can provide any additional information, if you'd like to tour our facility, to see it, have some conversations, talk to our parents, and just see the kids themselves, and we would love to be a huge advocate for that. Again, you can see some of the demographic information that we have. Being the second-largest school district in the state, I do think it's an opportunity for us to be leading the charge to get us to the proper amount of funding for early childhood education.
I was just going to add in that, given the governor's focus on childcare, I think that we've got a valid argument for full funding for full-day preschool.
And that's one of the reasons why there is a bipartisan group with legislators that are working together to have this happen because it will open up spaces for childcare so more can go to work, and it does make sense.
I have some statistics here that came to us via the Urban Education Network, but the original study came from the Education Commission of the States, and some of these statistics are just like startling, so maybe this will help you make a case. If kids go to a high-quality preschool, they are 25% less likely to drop out of school. They are 40% less likely to become a teen parent. They're 50% less likely to be placed in special education. They're 60% less likely to never attend college, and they are 70% less likely to be arrested for a violent crime. Again, it seems like how can we say no to four-year-old preschool? The payback there just is like astounding. Those statistics are crazy. So if those, if you need those statistics, I would be happy to share them with you. Are they in there? Okay, cool. Other questions, comments? The session starts on January 8th, okay? And I know there is some sort of law about when we have to have SSA determined. Do you guys know that off the top of your head?
30 days after the?
First 30 days, okay.
Presentation of her budget.
Okay, okay.
I don't think we've made that in a while.
Yeah. Do you have any advice on how we can be most effective at using our voices with the governor or with the legislature?
Start lobbying on the 9th.
Start lobbying on the 9th.
Go wait.
Okay.
And if we needed to contact you during session, is there a preferred mode of communication we can defer to for each of you?
You can text me or you can email me. She's got my number. She's got my number.
Okay.
Just wanted to point out that about preschool and how that leads to success, there's a handout that just came around that was, is presented through a coalition of Christian schools, the Iowa Association of School Boards, Iowa Catholic Conference, and School Administrators of Iowa. So this is, again, this is something that's realized both in public and in private, that it's a definite need and a definite benefit.
Just a heads up, the IASB Day on the Hill is February 13th, I believe.
13, 14?
13, 14.
13, 14.
Somewhere, it's always somewhere around Valentine's Day because we love to spend our day with you. So you can expect to see some of us down there in Des Moines, and?
As I added to my calendar, I'm also noticing that's the first funnel week, so.
Oh, okay.
The ESA, or I mean, the SSA is a money bill, so that won't be affected by that, but it'll be a busy week, so do be there.
Okay.
If you can.
Okay. We appreciate all of you taking your time to be here, and as Dr. Grover said, if we can provide you with any help or background or tours of Truman Early Learning Center, we would be more than happy to do that. Otherwise, I'm sure that you will be hearing from some of us as the session gets started. And with that, I think the work session is adjourned, and we will reconvene for our regular board session at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that item two of the consent agenda for Monday, December 11th, 2023, Board of Education regular meeting be amended so that the reference termination salaried staff is changed to resignation salaried staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Rontree.
Aye.
Director Bortching.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I move that the amended agenda for Monday, December 11th, 2023 Board of Education regular meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Bortching.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Rontree.
Aye.
President Garlock.
I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Grover for her report.
Thank you so much, President Garlock. Well, first things first, winter break reminder to all of our families that our winter break will run from December 22nd, excuse me, through January the 2nd. District offices will be closed on December 25th. I'm assuming it's just the 26th and the 29th. I hope that's right. And January 1st. There will be no district newsletter next week, so this will be our final newsletter for 2023 coming out on Friday. We hope everyone has a happy and safe holiday season, and we look forward to 2024. Speaking of the holidays, I had the opportunity to join Mr. Jess, is it Bungie, and the Jefferson High School singers today to work on this year's district holidays message. It was fun, such a talented group. Early in the morning, I think we had a great time. Thank you, Jefferson, for letting me join you today. Also, we would like to announce our Cedar Rapids Community School District's job fair. We are holding a district-wide job fair on Tuesday, December the 19th. Those in attendance will have the opportunity to learn about current openings and career opportunities within our school district. They will have the opportunity to meet with hiring managers and explore the many benefits of working at Cedar Rapids Community School District. The job fair will be held at the ELSC here from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Please come out and join us. One of the best places that you can choose to work and to serve our students. Speaking of jobs, last week, 10 Cedar Rapids Community School District students from Jefferson and Kennedy High Schools participated in a unique signing day opportunity for future healthcare professionals. The students have been participating in Kirkwood Certified Nursing Assistant Academy and have completed the necessary training to earn a CNA license. The signing day event allowed them to kick off their careers by signing to be patient care technicians at Unity Point St. Luke's. If you all have an extra Christmas card or something like that, you might want to drop one to Unity Point. What a beautiful opportunity for our students. This opportunity was made possible through a program with the Grantwood Area Education Agency, another Christmas card. Grantwood has partnered with 18 employers in eastern Iowa, including Unity Point Health, to place students in apprenticeship programs that offer students real-world, hands-on experiences to begin their professional careers right here after graduation. We hope to continue to expand the learning opportunities. This is what it looks like when we talk about college and career readiness within our district. Just one shining example, thank you to Unity Point and to the Grantwood Area Education Agency and Kirkwood for supporting our students. Speaking of building the future, we are still on this journey for building future-ready facilities together as we walk through a process of embracing, exploring, explaining, and executing. We feel like these are all parts and pieces that are necessary as we look ahead to the future of our district. We are taking a bold step here towards our vision of future-ready facilities. The district is publicly inviting proposals from outside firms to help us with the renewal of our PEPAL funds in September 2024 and the passing of a general obligation bond referendum in November 2025. This will be a two-year journey for us of engaging and mobilizing our community in our efforts to create the best possible facilities for our students and community. This happens when we take the time to go out to talk and listen to all of our community members in all corners of our community, understanding their needs, their desires, their hopes, and dreams for the students here within the Cedar Rapids Community School District. So we look forward to receiving those proposals, but moreover, we look forward to gaining some very critical feedback and input as we continue to address the facility needs that exist within our organization. We also know that student achievement is part of our first pillar as we look to elevate plans, pathways, and passions for our students. This week, we are pleased to welcome a team from Instructional Empowerment to our school district. Instructional Empowerment assists district leaders with building and improving schools' instructional systems and enhancing the capacity of their schools. Their mission is to help schools achieve measurable long-term outcomes for their students by focusing on prioritizing rigorous classroom instruction and school advancement. Their team will be conducting an assessment of our district to better understand our current attitudes, system capacities, and needs as it relates to academic achievement with the aim to increase our student achievement, which we know is a top priority for us, and equitable outcomes. In January, they will return to discuss their findings and recommendations. We look forward to building on the work that's already underway as we also look for a coherence model that would sustain and elevate student achievement across all of our student groups across the district. Thank you. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Are there any other board reports? I'd like to just take a minute to express my appreciation to this Board of Directors for their unwavering commitment and dedication towards the community during our quarterly board retreat on Friday, December 1st, 2023. IASB facilitated our morning, and it was a very productive session where we discussed a lot of things, including board governance, the role of the superintendent and the board, and we began to finalize our board operating procedures. We also worked on enhancing our committee and meeting schedule to better ensure engagement with district initiatives and to better understand our role in governing and setting forth the vision. I'm thrilled to see how the core operational committees will empower us as a board to build trust and credibility by communicating with transparency and inclusivity with our constituents. I'm confident that these efforts will help us provide the community with meaningful and pertinent board reports. The afternoon of our board retreat was filled with data. So thank you to the cabinet members who challenged us and filled our brains and updated our -- our cabinet also updated our future-ready facilities plan and our academic achievement. It was great to see how our data is looking, and I appreciate your courageous candor on where we are and where we need to go. So thank you all for participating that afternoon. We will now hear from those who have requested to address the board. Ryan, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address? Ryan, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
Yes, we have one.
Okay, thank you. With one speaker this evening, you'll be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reedstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time is expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There's a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Ryan, will you please call our first speaker?
Yes, DT McGee, representing Iowa Association of School Boards, and talking about thanking us and top-two priority, legislative priorities.
Well, thank you so much for your leadership and congratulations to the new members. ISB is your member organization, so it's exciting to hear that we were here for your retreat to help you lead part of that leadership day and that learning day. We can provide other services, whether it's supporting your staff that supports you or directly to the board and board members. And so thank you for your support. Also, I'm going to break one little rule here, and I'm going to use a few names. Jennifer Borcheting, Director Borcheting, serves on our board, so I want to specifically thank her for her leadership on the ISB board. It's extra time and effort that doesn't go unnoticed through our organization. And we have 17 members, and today I was able to come over. I'm going out to, this is my first year in this position, I'm going out to all of our board member areas around the state. And today was Cedar Rapids' turn, and so I was here visiting with three different board members. So Allen Jensen represents community colleges, and we had a tour of Kirkwood. What amazing facilities over there. We were able to see the hotel, convention center, even the restaurant, wonderful hamburger. I'd highly suggest that. And also saw their Vet Tech prep building and then their student center. Then we attended, we also went to Grant Wood AEA and saw their facility and was able to meet with their chief, Spear, and Jim Green, who's also serves on our board. And then, at the end of the day, we were able to go out and see some of the Cedar Rapids schools and the wonderful programs you have. And so we visited Hoover Elementary and Maple Grove Elementary, and it was just such a joy to go out and see the students and the staff and how hard they work. Public education works in this state. They are the schools of choice in our state, and ISB is your member organization to help promote that. So thanks to President Garlock for being present today, also Superintendent Grover for attending that and the other Cedar Rapids staff members. Our two legislative priorities this year, you have seen the full legislative slate that's before our members for ISB. We just approved that at our delegate assembly. But two of our top priorities include full-day preschool, and that's tied to some poverty levels, so it's not a proposal for all students at this point in time, but simply for, I think it's 180% of poverty, full-day preschool for four-year-olds. And so we're asking for that, and we have high hopes for that this legislative session. The other aspect, top priority, is our educator shortage, specifically with teachers. We're seeing that across the state with probably close to 1,000 teacher vacancies that the state of Iowa is experiencing. And so conversing with your staff today, I understand that Cedar Rapids has several teaching vacancies either that are open right now or an expanded area that they'd like to add staff members, but we simply don't have the capacity in our state to add those teachers. And so those are two of our legislative priorities and our legislative staff, our government relations staff will be working on that. So once again, greetings from Des Moines, greetings from ISB, the staff and the board that's here to serve you, and thank you all for your leadership and the support and the work we all do to support students and public schools in the state of Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you, DT, for visiting with us today, and we will do what we can to support those legislative priorities. Anytime you want to come back and visit the Early Learning Center and bring some folks with you, we're welcoming you. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Byers. Director Rontree.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Vice, or President Garlock.
For learning and leadership, we have two presentations. First will be Janessa Carr, and she'll be sharing information about Crisis Go. Janessa, the floor is all yours.
Good evening, board members. My name is Janessa Carr, and I'm the Safe and Secure Learning Environment Coordinator for the district. Today, I'm here to talk about Crisis Go, which is a technology that would help to keep our students and staff safe in the event of an emergency. So as we embark on our strategic plan, we have identified our first core pillar, which is to elevate plans, pathways, and passions. Under this first core pillar, we have our strategic anchor, which is to secure, safe and secure learning environments. We strongly believe that every student and staff member has the right to learn and work in a safe and secure environment. Therefore, today, I'm here to inform the board about a new technology platform that we have identified to achieve this objective. With this platform, we will be able to monitor and track any suspicious activity in real time. We will also be able to automatically alert the relevant authorities in the case of a threat. This will significantly improve the safety and security of our learning environments as currently, if there were to be an emergency that were to happen today, we don't have technology that will allow us to be able to communicate in a fast and efficient way. So this is really, really, really important. A little bit more about Crisis Go. Crisis Go is located in over 16,000 schools in the U.S. It's also located in all 50 states. Crisis Go has experience of 10 years working with public and private schools. And just so you have an idea of the size of the schools that Crisis Go is currently implementing, it's in Fulton County Schools in Georgia, they have 108 schools. Pasco Schools in Florida, they have 103 schools. Abilene Schools in Texas, they have 30 schools. And we also have one of our neighboring school districts just a few miles away that currently implements Crisis Go. Some of the other key features of Crisis Go is they have diverse notification methods, and so it allows staff to be able to send messages to people through text, email, and voice in the event of an emergency. It also has platforms that allow students to be able to see certain things as it relates to safety, family, teachers, staff, and administrators as well. And Crisis Go also helps us with covering the steps from preparing for crisis and post-crisis as well. Crisis Go has really slick reunification safety features that we need. We're a very, very large district, and so if something happened, we need an app, we need a technology where we're able to follow the crisis, understand what's happening, understand where it is, and understand who's impacted. Currently, we do not have that technology. Some of the reunification safety features that we need, that we currently don't have, is we don't have a way to check in specific students electronically. We have paper forms, and so if a building with over 1,000 students, you know that we need to reunify, we need something electronic. Paper is not an efficient way to be able to track students. Another reunification safety feature is that when a student checks in at a reunification site, it's going to notify their parent, guardian, and all emergency contacts of their location, and it's going to send directions of where they should be picked up at. And it also allows mass communication to all emergency contacts, not just guardians. I've included a video on here that will help you guys to understand and see some of the neat features that our district is in dire need of right now.
In this high-level overview, we're going to cover the tools that are included in the iResponse platform. On the left side, yellow background, this is the iControl Risk Dashboard that administrators would be able to see. On the right side, blue background, this is what staff and teachers would be seeing when they are using the Crisis Go app. We will be going over both of them at the high-level overview. Starting with the iControl Dashboard, as an administrator, you'll be able to see any risks, any alerts that are currently going on, access records, see trends of any emergency event that's happening in one or multiple buildings. As an administrator, you will also be able to see where the event is happening, but more importantly, you will also be able to draw diagrams on the map that your staff will be able to see on the Crisis Go app. Last but not least, for the iControl Dashboard, as an administrator, you have the capability to send mass notifications to all or one of your staff, all or one of your students, all or some of your guardians. You can send that via email, SMS, or voice, all three or a combination. Now let's transition to the Crisis Go app and what your staff and teachers could see. On the screen right here, these are the different alerts that are completely customizable. And to send out an alert, it's a very easy two-step process. Select the alert of your choice, let's say lockdown, and simply slide to send. Now let's look at what it looks like to receive those alerts from multiple devices. Inside the app right here are different message groups, and these message groups are role and permission-based. Here's my desktop or laptop, and right here is my personal device without the Crisis Go app. You can be notified via phone call, SMS, or email. So as you can see, with the Crisis Go app, if there's an alert, the app will bring up a pop-up screen. We can even front-load your checklist. And for those who only have a cellphone, they could receive a robocall or phone call and even a text message. And the text message right here is completely customizable. For those who don't have the app, they can still participate with their cellphone via a URL that's included in the SMS message. Here's what it would look like from your cellphone. You can see the lockdown, you can see the details. You can also see where the alert is coming from just on your cellphone. You also have the capability to take attendance. And you also have the capability to respond to a check-in. For two-way communication, you also have the capability to message staff members or teammates in a message group. As you can see, with the Crisis Go app, you also have the capability to see the same thing that you saw on my cellphone, the ability to check in as well as the ability to take emergency attendance. Messaging in the app is easy as well. You can type a message, or if you are unable to text, you can use the multimedia options in the app. The last tool we want to show you is our reunification tool, which allows you to move your students from the time they are checked in to the kid hold station. And when a parent arrives, you can move them to the transfer station. And at the transfer station, you have the ability to collect a release signature and even take a picture of the guardian's driver's license, a picture, or even a video recording as an additional layer of documentation. And if you ever need information about the child that was released, our system shows you all that, also a timestamp of the child's movement throughout the entire process. For administrators, you also have a statistics screen. Part of our reunification tool set also includes a guardian notification tool that allows you to send mass email, mass SMS to all or some of your emergency contacts with one click of a button. When your parents receive this information, they will be able to see instructions on how to pick up their child. They'll be able to see the name of their child, the status of their child in real time, as well as a reunification site or a place they need to go to.
And something they didn't share in this is that, you know, our reality is that if we did have a situation where we would need to reunify, you know, when we think about middle school and high school students, they're not necessarily going to go to the reunification site. A lot of them are going to run home, some of them are going to get in their cars, and so on this app, middle school and high school students will be able to log in and check in and let us know that they are safe versus us assuming that they're missing. So there's just so many good safety features that our district is in serious need of right now. And the last, the last thing that I wanted to present to you guys was the timeline. And so obviously, I'm here today giving you this board presentation. My hope is for board action in January. There would be a contract signing in February. March is when the Crisis Go team would work with us to kind of customize the app to what our needs are for the district, and they would train the Crisis Go team, which would be here at the ELSC. And then April is when we would provide professional learning for administrators and ELSC staff. And then May and June is when we would roll out that professional learning for teachers and school staff, and then by August, we would have a way to train parents and students on how to use the app. So that's the plan as of now. Any questions?
This is wonderful, just to unify all those processes and consider, you know, safety is an utmost importance in schools. As I was looking at the video, I'm curious about languages. So if you have families with English second language, is this translated into other, you know, how does that work?
So we would have to work with our communications director on that. So currently, they do not have the messages available in other languages, and so the plan would be for our communications to transcribe the messages to send through the app.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
It looks nice, and it's something that we certainly need. But when you were doing your presentation, I was wondering, in comparison to other programs that are out there like this, what made you pick this one for this district? Like, what stood out about it that was great, a great feature for us?
I think one of the biggest things is that I've used Crisis Go for the last six years. I've also had, you know, Crisis Go meet with many staff members here. They vetted it through our safety teams. You know, we had both of the lieutenants that I work closely with, Lieutenant McGarvey and Lieutenant Welsh, also visit with Crisis Go, and they were on board. And also the experience, they're just in over 16,000 schools, all 50 states, and they're the only technology app that has 10 years of experience in helping schools with like crisis and emergency planning. So I really do have full faith that they're the best app for us. The only downfall, like she said, really is a language barrier, and we have not, I would not say that there's a technology that provides good transcribing for other languages right now. That's a huge disadvantage, I would say, right now for all companies across the board.
Okay, and that's just something that we'll just work through to try to get that net.
All right. Yeah, we will communicate an alternative plan for communicating that, for sure.
Thank you.
I was also curious about the 16,000 schools. Of those, is it most effective at certain grade levels, ages, you know, or is that encompassing?
Yes, it's all-encompassing. Because usually, the entire district would be using it and not just like one school within the district.
Right, that's what I figured. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Janessa. That was very informative. Appreciate it. Our second learning and leadership presentation will be the Calendar Committee's proposal for school year 2024, 2025. So Calendar Committee, the floor is yours.
Thank you for your time today as we process the 2024, 2025 proposed calendar. We want to root our work and our mission and vision as always. So our vision is every learner future-ready. So that's one thing that we took into account as we started to develop what this calendar could look like for the school year. Our mission is so that students have a plan, a pathway, and passion for their future, and we're rooting it in our core pillars. So when we talk about our priorities, you will notice that our priorities of creating a calendar were rooted in the four pillars, specifically a couple that we'll point out later. I'm going to hand it over to Arice and let her talk about the process.
All right, good evening. Well, the process was simple. We were tasked to find a group of people who were willing to give up their evenings and to be willing to think first outside of the box and then start to look at some parameters at which we had to work to develop the parameters at which we had to work to develop the committee, the committee's plan for a school calendar for next year. So, the pictures you're looking at, some of our committee members didn't want to partake in, but I thought it was important to capture what it was like. It was always an evening of engaging work, people asking hard questions, wanting to be a part of the process. And our committee was comprised of three parents, four building administrators, four teachers, two ELSE administrators, and of course, our favorite, Justin, who did a lot of legwork. We met, we started meetings since September, and our last meeting was just last month, and we are here tonight to share what we came up with. I do want to tell you, though, our, we're a lucky group. This is a committee people would like to participate in. There are some folks who just said yes, and we want to tell you that our committee, many of them are here tonight. So, if you just would wave, committee members, yeah, don't be shy. And we had several others who emailed and just said, oh, you know, I'm not feeling well, or my child's sick, so everybody wanted to be here. So, I just wanted to at least let you know that even in spirit, although everybody didn't get to win the prize of speaking up here, decided to join us tonight anyway. So, let's get into the priorities, shall we? After you have a really robust discussion about the ideal calendar and you start to look at those limitations, these are the things that we had to really hone in on. I will tell you that we didn't agree on everything, but we did come to compromise. We did look at what's going to be best, what can work, and what were our needs now. As many of you know, we've had a very stagnant calendar for many years. And so, this group looked at what can we do differently to help us maximize instructional time, help us promote the health and well-being of our staff and students, and also what else can we do to help us provide those professional learning opportunities that we have to have as we are an innovative and forward-thinking district? We got to have time for that. And so, with those priorities and then those hopes, wishes, and dreams, we worked out a plan.
Hi, I'm Monica Frye, I'm Principal at Truman Early Learning Center. This happens to be my second year on this committee, and like Erice said, lots of thoughts, sometimes emotions, and definitely my brain hurt after those committee meetings, but lots of rich, rich conversations we had. So, I am going to be talking about, like Ryan said, the pillars. And I think if we can move to the next, am I not right? Am I not right? Oh, God, I don't like to click. Okay. Is it that one? Cool. Oh, thanks, Justin. I'm going to go back, though. Yeah, there we go. Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to talk about pillar number one, and now it's gone. Okay, there. So, evaluate or elevate plans, pathways, and passions. So, I'm going to be talking about the data points that we looked at in some of our decisions that we made. So, data point number one is our average daily attendance for students across the district is ninety-two percent. But on Fridays, the average daily attendance for students is ninety percent. The next one is our students' achievement scores have not significantly increased since changing to our early-out Fridays. And then, due to early-out Fridays, student schedules become condensed and shortened, impacting our much-needed instructional time. The next pillar I'm going to discuss is pillar number two, energize the staff. So, the first data that we looked at is definitely feedback from the superintendent's teacher cabinet overwhelmingly favored moving away from the early-out Fridays. This feedback was consistent with other stakeholder groups as well. The calendar was designed as an intentional strategy to help staff's physical and mental health and well-being. Our staff absenteeism rate has increased, and our substitute fill rate has then decreased. The calendar was designed to develop staff through all-day professional learning, feedback from the Board of Education and various work groups states that they also are not properly trained for our changing student needs across our district. Feedback from the superintendent's community cabinet supports the move from early-outs to full days off for that professional development time.
So, the drumroll, the proposed calendar for 2024, 2025 is as such, the big, the significant change that you will notice, or significant shift that you will notice, is that we move away from early-out Fridays to all-day professional learning. So, that's the most significant shift within this calendar. As you've taken some other shifts for our staff members, you'll notice that new teacher professional learning has been condensed based on feedback that four days is overwhelming for those new teachers. Our start date is still the same, August twenty-third. Our end date for students is scheduled for June third, 2025. There's an extra fifteen point five hours built into the schedule for possible late starts and early dismissals due to inclement weather or other various needs. Students receive a full two weeks off at winter break for that holiday break, and various work groups will receive professional learning throughout the year. Therefore, the calendar will be built in so that their work schedule and work group will receive the professional learning that they've been asking for, not just teachers, but all work groups will receive that professional learning. So, those are some of the significant shifts for the proposed calendar. Our team has also has some next steps and some recommendations we would like to ask the board to help us with. We would like to continue meeting as a committee in the spring and summer to study and educate two shifts that are possible, switching start and end times for elementary and secondary students. That means flip-flopping them, and then adding time to our daily schedule and see what that would look like as we continue to study and educate families. But we want to be able to do that in a timely, forward-thinking manner, and the team did not feel comfortable doing such shifts for next year, but if we can have eighteen months out to help educate and study the process. Questions?
I have a question, if I could start.
Go ahead.
When you're looking at the calendar and moving away from early-outs on Fridays and taking that day that's in the month, has there been consultation with community partners and employers? And also, has there been conversation with before and after-school care, if they would still be running services, if they would extend those throughout the day? Just people are going to need to shift their work schedule, and there's going to be some need for some childcare.
Yeah, so we are, would be in the process of looking through what that would look like for that. Also, our community partners and discussing what that could look like with them as well for those days. And this is a, it's a shift for us, but districts surrounding us as well do a full-day professional learning once a month or so. So, we could partner with them and ask them questions, is how their families work with it.
Thank you.
One of the things that I'd like to call out is the three days that I see on the calendar for teacher-directed professional development. Just like speaking from experience, I think it's really important to show teachers in a real and concrete way that you respect the work that they need to do in their classroom, and they are professionals, and they can figure out what they need to do to be a better teacher. So, I appreciate that being called out in the calendar.
And we were actually really excited to talk about it. It was brought forth as an idea. As you know, this is not a practice we've had before, and we've talked about the language to be sure that all parties are very aware of what that means, and we think it's going to be something pretty positive because we have not been intentional about allowing teachers to design what they need to do in a timely way. And as you can see, the very first one happens right at the end of first semester. I mean, what a time to have opportunity to sit down, figure out what it is you need to do, and you're not balancing between trying to finish up your reporting and jumping into a meeting. So, we're real excited about the opportunity to have three opportunities like that this year.
Other questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you for the time you put into this and also making sure that that committee is representative of all of those groups. I think that that is crucial, and so, thanks for doing your due diligence.
See a note, but I'm not sure if I heard you say it, but so the full-day closures will be made up at the end, right? So, there's no plan on this calendar to take away those full-day, like, training, right? So...
That's correct. We run the risk on those light green and golden rot days to let the weather do what it may.
Sure.
It's risky.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much, and thanks to the committee for all the hard work that you've put into putting this calendar together. We'll look forward to speaking more about it. Moving on to administration, we have a request to approve the School Budget Review Committee for additional allowable growth, on-time funding for increased enrollment, unfunded English learner costs, and open enrollment students not included in previous year's enrollment. Are there any questions for Carla? Do we have a motion to approve the request? Is there a second? This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Tominski. Director Humbles. Director Byers. President Garlock.
Aye. With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you.